All right, welcome everybody. We're gonna get going here. This is the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Monday, November 21st at 5:30. Get a roll call please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Weber.
Blonsky.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. To follow up on last, two weeks ago at City Council, we've got another group that's gonna come lead the pledge with us. So if we could get Wolf Pack 116 up here and we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. So come on over by the flag. All right, we got Wolf Pack leader Thomas Huthard. Did I say that right this time?
Heather.
Heather, gosh, all right.
Yeah, we're Cub Scout Pack 116, chartered by St. Paul's Episcopal Church. And this is our wolf den. Our wolves are second graders, so this is their first Pledge of Allegiance.
Nice.
So I've got Sam. Come on up, Sam. Sam, this is his first year in Cub Scouts. So Sam, what do you like about Cub Scouts?
Uh, that you get to do fishing and stuff.
What's not to like about that? All right.
And this is actually my daughter Jerika. This is her third year of Cub Scouts. Jerika?
My favorite thing is resident camp.
Oh, nice.
So we've got a resident camp out by Park Rapids, Minnesota, where they do fishing, BB guns, and archery. And this is Lydia. Lydia's a second-year Cub Scout.
I love your Cubs Scouts because we get to sell popcorn.
All right, we appreciate you letting us do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Just got a few announcements. The first one's a public health announcement, so I did not know this, but Public Health Thank You Day is the first Monday after, or first Monday before, I guess the only Monday before Thanksgiving. So I'm gonna read this real quick. "On Monday before Thanksgiving, research America, the leading public health organizations, take the time to say thank you to our public health workforce who labor tirelessly every day to protect us from disease, injury, and other health threats. From the ordinary to the extraordinary, these heroes help our drinking water, help keep our drinking water clean, our communities healthy, and our children safe. The sheer number and complexities of public health challenges confronting our nation and the global community, the need to prepare for future pandemics, health worker burnout, and resignation, dwindling trust in science and public health advice, and AMR among others, have only reinforced the tremendous value of the public health workforce. The dedication of these individuals cannot be overstated." So, thank you for that. We had, I wanted to thank UND for hosting the Veterans Day Program. I was able to go over there and speak, and they do a great job with that. So thank President Armicost for putting that on. That was another well-done event, and they made it through the blizzard to get that done. We just got back late last week. We were out in Washington DC as part of the National Guard Association of the United States, so I was glad to go out there and represent Grand Forks as they did the National Guard Reception in Washington DC. So happy to support the 188th year, which does air defense artillery. And they've had a couple of assignments for the last three or four years out in DC, protecting the skies of DC. So that's a pretty cool and pretty exciting assignment. We had, I guess the last thing was the mission. They had their 80th anniversary, the city was a sponsor of that, so anything you can do to help out the mission, it's always a challenging time of the year in the winter as you get more people going inside. So that was a great banquet. Outside of that, just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, just coming up on Thursday. Get some time with family and friends, and don't eat too much turkey, so.
There's no question.
All right, on to number two, citizen comments. And there are none tonight, so move on to three awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. This is a pretty good theme, there are none of those tonight. So we're moving right along to four, public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
4.1 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section 3-02036101/136010114 and 6-0103 as it relates to department head classification.
All right, thank you. Open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here from the public that'd like to speak on item 4.1? All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion, and looking for a motion from council.
Approve.
Got a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Weigel. Any further comment on the item? Mr. Bean, please.
Yeah, Mayor, on Section 4, Paragraph H at the bottom, it says, "Persons employed by the Grand Forks Center Commission." Is that the Alaris Commission?
Mr. Gossett?
I think that'd be correct. That would be my reading of it. That probably should be changed to make it consistent with what we refer to it.
And the only other comment I had was on Section 1, under 3-0203, on the removal of appointed officers. Right now, it is if the council by a majority vote disapproves, right? I think you and I had talked about that, Dan, Mr. Gossett, about that aspect, right?
Correct. There's actually two ways that it can be, the person can be reinstated. One is if the mayor doesn't follow the procedures in providing that report, and then the second would be through a majority vote by the city council.
Okay. You, and I think as I remember, you and I had talked about the potential if that could have been the Civil Service Commission instead of the city council. That would, for me, I really liked the improvements. I think there's some benefits to what we had, but I was, I wanted to have a better clarification that that could be the Civil Service Commission, but you had some concerns about that?
It can be the Civil Service Commission. And I guess if that's the direction the council wants to take, they could. But then at that point, it almost is if, then there'd be, why make the change at that point then if you're gonna have the Civil Service Commission do it? And I think you'd have to then think about what the Civil Service Commission, some of their roles with respect to what they'd be doing under this particular set of circumstances versus a classified employee.
Yeah, and one of the things I really liked about this was the hiring process, where you were able to expedite the process and have some improvements over what I would say, a longer, lengthier process under the Civil Service Commission, but, which to me helps bring us up to do a better job of hiring. It doesn't change anything for the mayor for him being able to hire and fire. What it does is, if there's a concern about it, it comes to the city council, which is a political body, versus the Civil Service Commission, which is not. Right?
The way it's drafted, that's correct.
Do we need to make amendment to change that to the civil or to the Alaris Commission?
We could, and/or alternatively, we could just bring it forward at a later date. It seems like kind of a Scrivener's type of change, more substantive.
Do you want, yeah, if you could just, upon attorney review, make that change? I think the council's comfortable with that.
But isn't it the Grand Forks Events Center Commission? It's not the Alaris Commission, it's the Events Center Commission, right?
I think so. I'd have to take a look exactly what it reads under the ordinance.
I think that's the gist of it, that's what you're, you just need to add the word "event." Is that what we're looking at for H, after Grand Forks?
If that's what it, if that's what we call it, that would be it. And it seems to me that that's just a Scrivener's modification.
Mr. Gossett, you should explain what Scrivener's. Yes, for us laypeople.
Sorry. It means an error that somebody, wasn't an unintended error, it doesn't change the substance, it's a non-substantive change.
Okay, so upon the final signing, you can get that changed? Sound like a plan?
I certainly can do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? Mr. Weber?
Mayor, this is one of your early initiatives when you took office. I've been kind of opposing this from the beginning. I'll probably vote against it again tonight, just out of habit, but I wanted to say, thanks for all the spirit of compromise and the actual compromises that have gone into this. I think it, thanks, it's been a good process. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Weber. All right, seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one with Weber dissenting.
All right, 4.2, public hearing and determination of protest for Project 8562, District 767, paving and street lighting, Southern Estates, 93 subdivision, and Project 8563, District 593, Bucks Culvered, for Southern Estates, 9th subdivision. These are to be, the public hearing to be postponed to December 5th.
All right, thank you. So what do you need on that one, then? Motion to postpone it?
Just a motion to postpone it to December 5th.
All right, can we get that motion? We got a motion from Mr. Cavami, and a second from, anybody else wanna pull postpone it? Ms. Osowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries unanimously, we'll postpone that to December 5th. That's all parts A, B. Okay. All right, we're moving on to five action items. We're gonna, the administration would like to pull 5.8 and 5.23. Why don't we, I know item 5.22, it sounds like that's gonna be pulled completely, so why don't we vote on the rest, then we'll bring up that in order. So, is there any other items outside of 5.8 and 5.22 and 5.23 that council would like to pull for further discussion? Yep, Mr. Sandy? President Sandy?
5.3 and 5.21.
Okay. Any other items for any council members? So we've got, right now we've got 5.3, 5.8, 5.21, 5.22, and 5.23 polled. So with that, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the following items. 5.1, 5.2, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.9, 5.10, 5.11, 5.12, 5.13, 5.14, 5.15, 5.16, 5.17, 5.18, 5.19, and 5.20. Got a motion on those items? Got a motion from President Sandy, second from Vice President Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry unanimously. On to 5.3.
5.3, Altru Infrastructure Partnership Funding Request for New Hospital.
All right, President Sandy, please.
Mr. Mayor, if, just a general observation, with the United Way, and granted, the United Way apparently is going to pull their motion tonight to create the PUD, to create their daycare center. Altru is one of our largest employers in our community, and probably one of the largest users of daycare all across our community. And with the construction of the new hospital, it sure would be great if Altru would have a daycare center, even if it's only for their own employees. And I know that Altru has been investing in lots of things in our community, in Blue Zones, and you name it. I'm purely making the observation that it would be great for our community if Altru would take it upon themselves, again, knowing that the United Way is taking this on because they see a major need in our community for daycare. And they've also, the United Way has changed their model to, instead of being a funder of nonprofits, because of the need they see in our community, instead of funding other nonprofits, now they're taking donations from people, and they're using it to try to build daycare in our community. And so I think when you look at the broad brush of our community and what our needs are, and again, knowing that Altru is, the employees at Altru are a major user of daycare in our community, you kill a lot of birds with one stone if Altru put together a daycare for their own employees. It would do a great service, not only for the Altru employees, but also for all of the rest of the, providing, opening up spaces for other people within our community, as well as potentially taking a burden away from the United Way, which can then get back to funding other nonprofits. So purely an observation, and I'll move approval, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. We have a motion to approve, we have a second. We got a second from Ms. Blonsky. Any further comment than on item 5.3? All right, well I think it's definitely some great ideas, something to pass along. I think Kristy was taking some notes back there, so that's great to hear, but longer discussion to add certainly on that item. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one with Weigel dissenting.
5.8, Project 8658, East Grand Forks, Grand Forks Red River Crossing Engineering Agreement.
You wanna start with this one, Mr. Phelan? You wanna add any more context?
Mayor Potenski, members of the city council, as you recall, we're at a dead heat of 3-3 regarding this matter. This particular agreement is for both Maryfield Road Review, Scoping Review, and also the Intercity Bridge Scoping Review. And right now, the two current locations are Outstrive and 32nd Avenue are the two that are available. I think our colleagues at East Grand Forks have helped lead this scope and review, and it's in front of you. Mr. Karinko and I, we did recommend that if we're all going to be in on both Maryfield and the Intercity Bridge, the Maryfield Bridge is clearly a county, needs to be a county-led project, and then the Intercity Bridge is a, has to be the two cities leading it, and so that's why we've recommended the 25% cost share, just because of all the, both bridges and that sort of thing. So, and in the scope of review, both bridges are noted. You did have a joint meeting with East Grand Forks, and I think the general concurrence was that the counties were willing and able and wanting to try to lead the Maryfield Road Bridge and interchange as part of that. So that's why we're here today. It's about both of them. I would say there's generally more support, I think, with our city council for the Maryfield, to get that one done first, at the very least, and then come back to the Intercity Bridge. What I would like the city council to move forward with is that we recommend some sort of moving forward with this scope. And I think it's a, it's a good move for us to move forward in some form or fashion, and certainly it's going to be years before we're at a point where we're gonna be at or near construction on either, at either the Maryfield or the Intercity Bridge. We do have two higher priorities, which is the 42nd to Merz Underpass and interchange. We're much further along in those two projects, but I think we should be looking out over the, this five to 10-year horizon at these two opportunities. So I think right now the time is ripe. I don't, I think if you don't move forward with this, I don't think the two counties will then likely move forward, so I'm really encouraging you, 'cause I think Maryfield Bridge and interchange is really an important project for Grand Forks. And so I would hate to have us not move forward with anything because we can't agree on an Intercity Bridge. And we've always said there, those should be worked in parallel with one another, and whatever is ready to go move forward, we should move forward with. We have gotten word back from the North Dakota DOT, the, as I said last time, the Intercity Bridge is really a local decision. The, our DOT is not going to get involved in the day-to-day blocking and tackling of that, so if we're gonna do that, they're gonna encourage us, they're gonna give us some advice, but they're gonna tell the two cities, or at least the city of Grand Forks, do what you think is best, we're not gonna get involved. I think on the Maryfield, the Maryfield Bridge, the feedback that we've received, and this has been a decades-long journey, that they weren't really sure of kind of where we were at with Maryfield, and there's, I think so if you're looking at a scope, if I were you in recommending this, the Maryfield Bridge, there seemed to be not a lot of data and information about where we're at with that. So I think this initial scoping would be good to move forward because not only the DOT was really reconnaissance of kind of where we were at with that. So I'm really encouraging you to move forward as a partner with our two counties and cities to move forward with something, and I know there was some skepticism. And I think to Mr. Cavami's concern about what are we really studying? I think if you really wanted to focus in on scoping and figuring out where we're at, and including the DOT, because the DOT is going to have to be, including federal highways can have to be included on the Maryfield Bridge and interstate interchange, I think if you want, I think if you wanna look at that, I would focus in on that because that's truly, we need them as partners, and I think that would be time well spent. So that's kind of my iteration, and I think by doing, moving forward, it allows the other three partners to know that we're in on something.
All right. Mr. Phelan, you got a chance to watch the Grand Forks County, they spoke about this initially, did they, they didn't vote on it, but what was the tenor of that conversation?
I think when I observed that, it is gonna, the county is gonna move it forward to their, I think, December 5th meeting, which will be their first meeting with their new county commission. I think there was some confusion, and just to reiterate, the selection panel contained both city representatives and also contained both counties. And due to our joint meeting, we all agreed we're gonna go through, forward with both. And really what we want, the county, the two counties involved, we don't need them involved in the Intercity Bridge, period. But we need them involved in the Maryfield Bridge. And so I think there was some confusion at the county commission, is that we were asking them to get involved in the Intercity Bridge. We're not asking the two counties to get involved in our Intercity Bridge discussion with East Grand Forks, but we are asking them to lead the Maryfield Bridge. And I think this council, and Mayor, you very much encouraged them, if they move forward because they have to lead those things, we'll be here in a supportive role and helping them through that process, but we need them to take up the mantle. So that's why they're involved, and that's why it's going back to the county commission, it's not for the Intercity Bridge.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. I'm gonna open up to comment from the council. Maybe you guys are ready to vote? Anybody got any comments?
Mayor, I've got a comment.
Let me start with Mr. Weigel.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's important, I've said for a while now, that we really need to focus on the grade separation at 42nd and to Merz, that that is our number-one project, and we shouldn't do additional work on major road projects until that is completed and that is done. However, I do see some importance for the Maryfield Bridge only. I think we've heard from people that live within the city, that the heavy trucks, the, our farmers that are working hard, and there, it's taken a toll on our roadways, it's, they're going through our neighborhoods, they're, they're going through downtown, and I do think that we need to eventually address Maryfield Bridge and get something, a plan in place for that. I'm not supportive of any of this going towards an Intercity Bridge. I think we solely need to focus only on the Maryfield Bridge, and if it's a 25% cost share between the two cities and the two counties to only look at Maryfield, I would support that. But nothing with the Intercity Bridge at this time.
Okay, let's go, I guess from your perspective, let's get your thoughts first. Would you rather have a vote on the item as is first, and then go down that road later? Or what would you prefer? Mr. Weigel? Yeah, I guess the question was to be...
I'm for either or. I leave it up to everybody else.
We had Mr. Weber, then we'll go to Ms. Blonsky. Go ahead, Mr. Weber. Okay.
So I just wanted to tell you a quick story. On September 30th, a second-grade girl was hit by a car right outside of Phoenix, same age as the cuties who said the pledge allegiance tonight. If we continue to bury our head in the sand and do nothing, the MPO has the studies that say that neighborhood is getting a big fat F. And I feel like it's the near south side against the 32nd neighborhood. 32nd neighborhood is also in need of a lot of changes if we continue to do nothing. So if we continue to sit here and say we don't need an Intercity Bridge, the studies have been done. It's already there. We need something. There needs to be relief. If we continue to develop, if we continue to grow south, we need an Intercity Bridge. The studies have already been done.
Thank you, Ms. Blonsky. Mr. Weber?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Phelan, I think that we're, we see a lot of things the same way. And Mr. Weigel, I've acquiesced on the 42nd grade separation and said, yes, for our legislative priorities, that's where we should be focusing our efforts at this time. However, there's, to suggest that it's one or the other, or that they're somehow similar, the cost of the scoping studies investigation that we've done so far on the grade separation of 42nd is probably over half a million dollars. Our share on this scoping study is less than $40,000. So these are very different issues. The last bridge built in Grand Forks is built in 1967. At that time, the population was less than 40,000. We did not have a greenway, we did not have the advanced flood protection system that we now enjoy. Over the last decade and longer, we have been gathering data. That data indicates that Grand Forks needs a new bridge. It's short-sighted for us to engage in isolationist thinking that we can ignore regional traffic, that this is somehow East Grand Forks problem and not our problem. We count on that regional traffic for sales tax revenue to help pay for our roads and our water infrastructure. So to pretend that there's, there's no problem for Grand Forks ignores reality. I regularly see traffic backed up onto the Point Bridge during the morning rush hour. Further, the data that we have indicates that the majority of our city's taxpayers want a new bridge, especially if we can get the feds and possibly the two state governments to pay for most of it. When we are elected to council, we're elected by people in our ward, but it becomes our job to make decisions based on the good of the whole city. Indeed, we need to think not just about the whole city, in the present, we need to be thinking about the future as well. All the data points our attention to only one bridge that has a positive cost-benefit ratio, indicating that the benefits of the bridge outweigh the costs. There is only one bridge that has this positive ratio. Further, all the current data indicates that there's only one bridge option that realistically offers protection from most flooding. We talk about wanting a dry bridge versus a wet bridge as though there's a clear distinction between them. There's, there's a gradation here. There's a low-level bridge, a medium-level bridge, a high-level bridge. A medium-level bridge protects us from 100-year floods. Does that protect us from all floods? Are we getting more and more of these 100-year events? We are, but this is, once in a while and for a few weeks at a time, most of the flooding, we would be protected from most flooding with a medium-level bridge. We don't need a high-level bridge, which would only protect us from 500-year events. 500-year events, if we have one of those, we've got a lot more trouble than what's going on with our bridges. So 100-year events, these happen to us, a medium-level bridge helps protect us from 100-year events. And there is only one bridge that provides a likely scenario for a medium-high bridge, which is to stay open during 100-year flooding events. No high bridge has a positive ratio, which means that no high bridge has any current possibility of receiving federal funding. The one bridge, the only bridge that demonstrates a positive ratio and the possibility of staying open during most flooding is the bridge at 32nd. I often hear from fellow council members that they make data-driven decisions. However, the disregard of these two key data points, a positive ratio and the possibility of something like a dry bridge, means that we are politicizing the need for a new bridge. At this point, what we're being asked for tonight is not to choose a bridge, what we're being asked for tonight is to pony up and take part in a four-way expense to conduct a scoping study. This is not a $150,000 lift. We're being asked for around $38,000, put in 25% our share. This is to fund a scoping study to help us understand what we currently do not know, including what the funding possibilities are for future bridges. So this scoping study includes Maryfield because of our insistence, as has been noted. City council wanted Maryfield included in this study and the possibility of gaining state support due to the possibility of moving damaging truck traffic off of state roads. Please understand, this is a scoping study, and this is absolutely necessary in determining the best place for a necessary fourth bridge and for identifying the best funding opportunities to pay for it. Our city staff, even if they weren't understaffed and overworked, do not have the time or the expertise to conduct this study. And this is not just another study. It's essential to moving forward in the best interests of our city. It would simply be irresponsible for us to not approve this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weber.
Mr. Mayor, I just add one thing.
Yeah, please, Mr. Weigel.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. I think you made some good points. The one thing I look at is, I think we can all agree that we're in favor of a Maryfield Bridge. I don't believe that I've heard one person on the city council say that we're opposed to a Maryfield Bridge. I don't... I don't think I've heard one person from East Grand Forks say they're opposed to a Merrifield Bridge. And so, it makes sense to put funding to look at some of those things. But what I have not heard from this group or the other group across the river is what we agree on as far as an inner-city bridge. Everybody has their own opinion and own thoughts, or interpret the data differently on where the best inner-city bridge is. Before, if we can't come to an agreement on where that should be, why are we putting money into it? And I think that's something that we need to look at. I think everybody's in favor of a Merrifield Bridge. I'm happy to support putting money to study some additional things out there. But until we can agree on where that inner-city bridge will go, I think we've, we've put money into it so far with MPO and everything else, that I think we need to come to an agreement between both people across the river and us over here in Grand Forks.
Mr. Weber, we'll go to, Mr. Weber, do you have a response, then, if there's, we'll open up to anybody else after that, so please.
So, I don't know that there's universal agreement about the Merrifield Bridge. For one thing, the Merrifield Bridge on its own does not enjoy a positive ratio. The costs outweigh the benefits of the Merrifield Bridge. And it, my understanding is, that the Merrifield Bridge would not be a medium-level bridge. It would not protect us from those 100-year events. The best possibility for a Merrifield Bridge is to consider them in conjunction, to look at an inner-city bridge and a possibility of that, that truck bypass. The way to get the best information for that is this scoping study. We do not yet know all the answers on this, and we need this level of exploration of a scoping study to get that information. Thanks.
Vice President Weber. I'll open up to any other council members that have any comments. Mr. Kavami, please.
So, I'd agree with Vice President Weber, that I think most folks could agree there's an opportunity to better connect the two communities. The problem I have is that any of those solutions aren't equitable at this point to where both of these bodies can sit opposite each other and all vote in support of a solution. So, I would agree with, with Councilmember Weigle that I would fully fund supporting, studying Merrifield Bridge because that makes sense. Everyone I've talked to is supportive of that. Why wouldn't we want trucks to not be running through downtown? I think if we're diverting traffic from one school, we're just sending it to another school. So, is that really solving a problem? So, while the data says, yes, this is a positive outcome, while the data says, yes, we could create change to change those traffic models, I think politically and emotionally, it doesn't really solve the problem. So, why, let's, let's, at the end of this meeting, let's set up our joint meeting, and let's talk about it. We'll solve it as joint councils, and then we can put that forward. But until then, I would only support Merrifield.
Mr. Kavami, just to be clear, when you said "fully fund," the Merrifield one, you meant "fully fund our one quarter," right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? President Sandy, please.
When I started pushmowing grass at my grandparents' house at 3125 East Elmwood back in 1978, I remember my grandfather telling me that one day perhaps there'd be a bridge right over there. And back then, there wasn't anything to the south of us. You could look for miles. You could almost see the country club from his backyard, because it went on forever out there. And back then, there was no political angst. There was no political opposition to a bridge at 32nd Avenue South, because nobody cared, because nobody lived there. Do you know, do you know in 1978 and 1980, do you know who complained about putting a bridge at 32nd Avenue South? When the city of Grand Forks was begging to do it, do you know who it was? Anybody remember? Anybody? Mr. Phelan, do you remember? You were in Mandan. You were a wee top back then.
I was, and I was only eight years old.
Yep.
I was not born yet, but please.
Yep. Surprise. It was the council members and the mayor in East Grand Forks saying, "You can't put a bridge way down there. There's nothing for us there. Why would we do that?" And so, fast forward 15 years, mid-'90s, city of Grand Forks wants to put the bridge, I don't, 47th, maybe even 62nd. Can you get a willing partner? Anybody that wants to go to the dance? Not a chance. East Grand Forks doesn't want it that far south. But you're right, Mr. Weber. You're 100% correct. We should have the intestinal fortitude to do what's right when the timing is right. And East Grand Forks has continued to not do what they should have done, over and over and over again. We should be putting up a big sign down at 78th Avenue South saying, "Future Bridge," and then wait 68 years and put the bridge there. We'll all be dead by then. This is, Mr. Kavami, Kavami and Kavami said it, I think, very eloquently. This is a political issue. This is not a data-driven issue. You're, you are, you are 100% correct. I love making decisions based on data. This one will never be made based upon data, because we've been put in a position where we can't make decisions based upon data, because East Grand Forks hasn't allowed us to over generations. So, here we are. We have very vast neighborhoods that have grown up without a bridge. And so, I'd love to figure it out. I want to. I've even said, I've been on the radio, I've been in here, I've said it to lots of people, I'll support building the bridge. I'll support it. I'm not gonna support putting it at 32nd, but I'll support one north of there. I will. I've said it before. I don't, I don't, I don't feel the willing, I, I, I ask people to go to the prom and I get turned down. I don't know what to do. So, sorry. Tricia, I want to build a bridge. I don't want second graders getting hit by cars. I don't want that.
I just wanna say that I'm not asking for it to move from one school to another. I'm asking it to be spread out.
Yep.
So, I'm not saying like, oh, let's, let's close the Point Bridge.
I'd love to close the Point Bridge, so we're all clear. I would love to close the Point Bridge and push everyone through downtown. I'd love it.
And the MPO has done a study. The, over 60% of Grand Forks said yes to 32nd. So, I think those numbers are out there, too.
Those people don't live there.
All right. Does anybody else think that more conversation will move their decision this evening?
I'll make, I'll make it fairly quick, Mayor. I think for the last two, four-year transportation plans we've had, and probably more, the same results we have each time identifying 32nd as a location. It's obviously been controversial, and it certainly needs more steady. I think the data has always pointed to that, to that location. But even with that, what I liked about this motion, it didn't say 32nd. It had to be. It said, it said Elk's Drive or 32nd, that could be a part of the process of moving it forward. So, it doesn't pin it at that location. I felt like that's a compromise to not have to say exactly what the long-range transportation plan and the study consultants have said. Let's open it back up again. And I think we've tried that several times, even on the, on the citizen study that we had a year or two ago, where we, we had, you know, broad-based citizens come forward and take a look at it. So, anyway, that's all I'm gonna say. I believe that this motion allows that to happen.
All right, why don't you, yeah, if you've got something to conclude with, Mr. Weber, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not interested in dragging it out or making debating points, but I'll respond to something President Sandy said. We had a ward meeting last Wednesday, two hours, joint Ward 3 and Ward 4. Much of the discussion that evening was about the bridge. Certainly, while I've, I've heard many people say that nobody wants the 32nd Avenue Bridge, we heard people who were interested in that, who were supportive of that. But most importantly, wherever the bridge goes, we need to make sure that the neighborhoods are safe for pedestrians. And, and if nothing happens, which, nothing's going to happen very soon, we need to do something to make the near-south side neighborhood safer for the, the kids and the families around Phoenix. One of the really innovative ideas that we heard that night was the possibility of closing the neighborhood to outside traffic during rush hour, to have people, essentially what you're saying, President Sandy, close the Point Bridge during morning rush hour and afternoon rush hour, and sending people through downtown for that hour when schools in and out. So, we, engineering was there, Mr. Brooks was there taking some notes, so we'll, we'll be looking at that. It was one of the innovative ideas. And with that, do, do we currently have a motion on?
I don't believe we have a motion.
I'll move approval of 5.8.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve 5.8. Do we have a second on that? I've just got a motion from Vice President Weber and a second from Ms. Lunskey. I will take, you know, one more shot here if anybody has any further comments. Otherwise, we have randomized at this time, so we will do a roll call vote. All right, seeing no further comments, why don't you put a roll call vote, please, Ms. Dorstad?
We will start.
Just, sorry, one second. Just give me a simple yes or no. It'll be easy. Thank you.
All right. Veem?
Yes.
Kavami?
No.
Weigle?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
Osowski?
No.
Lunskey? And Sandy?
No.
All right, the motion's been defeated, three to four. Thank you for the discussion.
Mayor, I'd make a, I'd be happy to spend $150,000 on a study to figure out how to close off the area around Phoenix Elementary during rush hour. Be happy to do that. That's a great idea.
Why don't we move that to a future COW or some other venue, but thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Could I ask a question of City Attorney Gostad?
Sure.
With 5.8 having now been defeated, can we, can we still consider an alternative motion on that, or is that item simply dead at this point?
You can do a reconsideration.
Mike, please.
Sorry. You could do a reconsideration at the next council meeting, or you could, as Mr. Sandy has proposed, there could be an alternative motion that's been presented, because the way I understand this motion was, it was for $150,000, split four ways on both the Merrifield and the inner-city bridge.
We're good, thanks.
Yeah, I don't think we currently have scoping on any, you know, to do one bridge to be able to vote or to go through that route right now. We'd probably need to come back with that done later, would you think, Mr. Phelan?
I think it would be important to demonstrate to our other local government entities what we're willing to consider. So, I would ask for a motion. Otherwise, it's gonna go into an abyss. And we're gonna be back. So, I would, I think this governing body should indicate what they're willing to vote yes on. That's what I'd ask for.
Yeah, I guess at this point, then, it, you know, any of the four knows, if they just wanna, I guess for discussion's sake, propose what they would be willing to do, I think that'd be, would that be comfortable under this item at this point, Mr. Gostad?
I think you can propose it. You're, you're moving in the direction of altering the agenda, but I think if, if you had kind of what we talked about with respect to the, I can see that little mobile unit back there, giving some indication as to what the council is, is willing to do, you could bring it up at the next COW meeting, and I think what we do is, is treat that as a final action at the COW.
Okay, so for now, if you've got any further comment, why don't we save it for the, the city council comments at the end, and then if you've got further discussion, we'll do it at that point. So, all right, with that, we'll move on to the next item, Ms. Dorstad.
Sure. 5.21, introduction of ordinance, preliminary approval of an amendment to the Grand Forks Comprehensive Plan to Include the 2045 Transportation Plan Update.
All right, thank you. Did we have anyone that wanted to give insight, or are we looking to vote on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that, again, although Mr. Veem had mentioned that we've always supported our friends across the river when they've wanted to make amendments to their, to the long-range transportation plan, I did point out that we didn't get a presentation on this from MPO. Our city staff did, and they had said that we'd probably be okay with this. And again, I'm, I'm not 100% sure that that's the right way to do it, but I'm okay for, with it for, for now, and perhaps when pertinent things like this come up in the future, we, we get a little more notification. I, for one, don't think that, knowing that, as Mr. Veem points out, every time the long-range transportation plan comes up, that 32nd Avenue South Bridge is in that transportation plan, and yet, the city of East Grand Forks had the opportunity to alleviate some of their south-end traffic woes by putting in the roundabout at Bigland and Reinhardt, yet, when their city councils approved, approved the funding for it, their mayor, not only did he veto it, but now he's asking to amend their transportation plan to move it off into the future Never Never Land. So, I don't understand why the city of East Grand Forks isn't trying to take care of some of their own transportation problems in southeast Grand Forks, and instead is trying to wrestle with us about studying bridge locations and, and processes. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm not supportive of this amendment, and I'm going to be voting no, sir.
Okay. Thank you, President Sandy. Do you want to, do you wanna get a motion on the floor, or would you like to discuss further at this time? You got some context, Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, this is the transit plan. So, this is actually the amendment to the long-range transportation plan for the transit update. So, they're, they're certainly able to make a presentation, but this is the bus changes for the, the long-range plan.
Yes, this is the bus changes. This isn't, okay, my apologies. I'll move approval. Let's move on.
All right. I was, I didn't realize the buses had been so contentious since Terry Birkey left the council, but, all right, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Got a second from Mr. Weigle. I'm assuming there's no further contact, comment now. All who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion has now carried unanimously. Thank you.
5.22, introduction of ordinance, preliminary approval of the rezoning of 1604th Avenue North, Wesley United Church to United Way micro PUD zoning.
All right, Mr. Brooks, I believe there's, there's been an ask to remove this from the agenda for tonight, or possibly indefinitely. Can you just give us some insight, please?
Yeah, we found out at about 5:00 today that the sale actually fell through between United Way and Wesley United. So, the request is to have this item polled, and we don't anticipate it coming back, so.
All right, we don't need a motion then to, to remove that item, so we will move on then to 5.23.
All right, 5.23.
What did you want, generally comments?
Joint Powers Agreement with Grand Forks Public School District, number one, for student transportation services.
Mayor Porczanski, members of the city council, we didn't have this on the committee of the whole, so I, number one, I want to say first off, thanks to Dale Bergman and the Public Transit Department for really executing this plan to help support our school district. This is the second year we've been doing this, and really, this updated JPA really spells out how we're supporting them. And essentially, what we're doing is, we're supporting the Grand Forks Public Schools and Dietrich through their contract by providing drivers. We get reimbursed by Dietrich. We follow the appropriate rules that we always do, because by chance, we run a city bus operation. And so, it's been, it's been a win-win. Right now, the agreement calls two to three drivers, and I think the last time I asked Mr. Bergman, I think we were, we were at that two to three. They can ask for more if they need to, but the reason why you haven't heard any issues with busing in the Grand Forks School District is because Dale Bergman and his team have been filling all the gaps. So, thanks for Dale for stepping up. So, thanks to Mr. Gostad for writing up the JPA, and we're generally, all three partners are in concurrence, so we were asking for approval for what we've been doing.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Any comments on item 5.23? Got a motion to approve from Vice President Weber. We have a second. Second from Mr. Kavami. No further, yeah, no, Mr. Sandy, please.
Are the, are students or families paying for busing yet, or are they, is the school district providing it for free?
No, they're, they're providing busing right now with Dietrich's, and they're paying for the service.
The school district is paying for the service for busing?
Yep.
And Dietrich is paying us back?
Yes.
Why can't they get bus drivers?
Dollars.
Why haven't they raised the price, the, the revenue, why haven't they raised the prices to the school district? Why aren't they paying their people more? There is a point where you can get bus drivers.
There is a point when you have a cost, that it costs for bus operators, but there's also an issue that you run across when you get somebody that has to be on there only for two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon. It does interrupt their, their day. So, it is a conflict in that pattern, but it's not our problem, as I would say, but...
Years and years and years, people have been doing it, for years. Busing, this is not new.
No, no, this is not new. And the last word we heard is that they are paying them $30 for the first hour and $16 an hour thereafter. So, I don't know how that all works, but I can tell you right now...
Doesn't work very well, obviously. It's just not working.
And they have been short, and we've been supplying upwards of five drivers for the last couple of weeks already.
So, I'm going to vote yes. I desperately want to vote no on this, because they need to... I desperately want to vote no on this because they need to figure this out, and if we keep bailing them out, they will continue to rely on us. We will never be able to get out from under this if we continue to allow this to happen. We have got to say no at some point. Like, we should say okay to the end of December, and then you're on your own. We, we've got to draw the line somewhere at some point. We have to end this.
Yeah, I don't think anybody disagrees, certainly with that. Mr., did you have something? Mr. Gostad had something to add to that, so.
To President Sandy's comment, there is a provision that allows us to terminate the agreement on 60 days' notice, so it wouldn't be the end of December, but there are, there are provisions that allow for early termination by the city.
I, I think our staff are amazing, and I really appreciate Mr. Bergman and his team wanting to help out. It's great, and I love the fact that we've been able to help the school district and Dietrich, and, and lots of feel-good here. We cannot continue to allow them to rely on us. We just can't. They, if we do it, we're enabling them. We're letting them get away with it. We've got to stop this. Okay.
All right, thank you, President Sandy. All right, so we'd be looking for a motion. I don't, was there a motion in there? Okay. Now, we do have a motion, that's right. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to six information items, and just so everyone's aware, we do have a Kiwi Bot here that did get approved to at least go forward with looking at ordinance changes. Mr. Phelan, if you're willing during citizen, your comments, not citizen, your administrator comments, we could let him come up and just, you know, have a brief summary on that, if you're willing to use some of your time for that, just so anybody was wondering. Information items, please, Ms.
All right. 6.1, statement of changes, changes in cash balances as of September 30th.
Thank you.
And 6.2 is your investment portfolio summaries of October 31st.
Thank you. Moving on to seven, approval of minutes and bills.
And the vendor list, 7.1, as is presented.
Can we get a motion to approve the vendor list? Got a motion from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Vean. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2 is the minutes from June 6th and June 20th, also the two meetings from June 28th.
All right, I want to, you know, thank finance for continuing to try to get caught up on these. Appreciate the, the workload. Can we get a motion to approve as-is, or do we have any changes? We got a motion as-is? Thank you. We have a second. Second from Mr. Weigel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. On to eight, city administrator comments, Mr. Phelan.
I have a few comments here, and then we'll let the Kiwi Bot come up. Number one, thanks, thanks for the, the second floor of City Hall has done, and our engineering inspections team is up there, so if you want to stop in there and check out that investment, so they're really glad they're back. And I, number, number two, thanks for all you guys have done. Number two, we are going to plan to bring the council chambers renovation, probably bring the con, the final concept back to you in December as city council, so you can take a final review of that and try to bid that after the first of the year, so that'll be coming your way. But a lot of appreciation for your willingness to invest in, in City Hall and, and better workspaces for everyone. Number two, we, I, we are working with the Park District on quality-of-life facilities and feasibility study. I anticipate getting at least, hopefully, a draft review back in December for your guys' review, and so that, put that on your list. Mr. Gostad and I are going to work with Councilmember Vean on the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. We're working on that partnership agreement, so we're going to have some meetings with Fargo. So we're going to go down to Fargo and have some longer-term discussions about that as we move forward, so we're working on that here in December. And then finally, two other things would be the wastewater treatment plan design. We are working that with the construction manager at risk. I would anticipate something coming back in December on that. And then finally, it's in the newspaper today, but we've been told by Fu Fang regarding the CFIUS review, and when we talk about the CFIUS review, the people that are going to get noticed are Fu Fang and also the three previous landowners that sold land to Fu Fang. They are anticipating the 45-day review period will be up on December 12th and getting some sort of word. And as we've described, you know, they can ask for an additional, CFIUS can ask for additional 45 days for review, but I think a lot will happen in December, those items, and so there'll be some more weighty issues coming before city council and for your feedback and, and direction. So with that, I'd hand it off to our friends to just bring, come up and present what you brought here today, and I know you guys are going to be in town this week, I think, to do some GIS mapping, and why don't you come up?
If you, if you want, can you, can you wheel the thing up around here? Does it got, or where are you at now? Oh, you got it on your phone, okay. At least we can get it on camera then, so people can get an idea. Can you get it around the, around the corner here? All right. Is it thinking for itself already? You just tell it what to do, or what?
I, I guess I'll just go ahead and start. First off, I want to thank you all for taking the time to, to take a look at this tonight. I'm Orland Rosas, I'm the Director of Dining Services at the University of North Dakota, and we've also got a student here representing the student body, Katie Elliott, and then David, I'm not sure what your last name is, David Velazquez.
David Velazquez on the head of supper of Kiwi Bot.
Okay.
So this is a service that we're looking at to bring to the campus. It's a food delivery service done by robots, basically, or rovers, autonomous rovers that will kind of disperse on campus, I guess, basically, so. The main thing, I guess, that we're in front of the, the council here is at some point we're going to need to take a look at how we can get a permit to actually cross some of the city streets, and we need to be able to cross Lake University Avenue and probably Columbia to reach the, all areas of the campus, so. So, yeah, I don't know. Katie, did you want to add anything, so?
So I know I spoke to you guys last week, and I've heard a lot of positive response in the last week from the student body, so I've been kind of asking my classmates around campus what they think. And I know they're really excited, and I've seen a lot of really positive feedback on social media as well. So I, myself, am very excited, and I think I can speak on behalf of the student body. We're excited to check these out and finally have them on campus.
All right, thank you. I think we all wanted to get a look at the, the size, and we're all, I know I'm wondering how we're going to do in the snow, but hopefully that'll be cleared quickly at UND. But, yeah, I guess anything further you guys want to add about it, or I guess we've got a lot of ordinances that Mr. Gostad has to look at, but I, I think it's nice to see the size of it and what it...
Do you think those little tires will make it over the snow? They're just baby tires. How much does it weigh?
Um, let's talk about the conversion.
It's roughly about 45 pounds in that neighborhood, so not really heavy.
You want to pick it up and give it a hug, Ms. Osowski?
I mean, its eyes did turn to hearts when it saw me, so.
All right, does anybody from, I guess, council have any other questions on it for now? Kind of, this is obviously just looking, Mr. Gostad's going to have to review if there's anything, any necessary.
I guess my only comment is I do not think we should permit it to cross four lanes of traffic at all, especially like on Columbia or whatever that other road is, but...
All right, Mr. Vean, any?
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Phelan, it'll, we'll probably need a permit just to be within the public right of way, not just to cross a street, right?
You are correct, yep, because it'll be not only in, it'll be in the right of way and streets.
It'll be in the right of way. That, I just wanted to have clarity. Obviously, you cross streets, you're in the right of way, but...
And one of the questions maybe we could ask is, people asked, well, if you're going to cross Columbia Road, whether, how are they going to hit the, like, walk button? I didn't have an answer for it.
Yeah, just give us some insight on how it does cross, cross the streets.
Normally, people would hit the, "I want to walk," right? And how is this machine going to do that?
So what, what we do with this is, first of all, we do have a, we do have the autonomous capacity, but for crossing the street, there will always be a human watching remotely what we're doing, so we always make sure. Actually, what we're doing in these days, that we're just, that we're arriving here, is to map these crossing streets and making sure how we're going to address them, and if we see that it's difficult to do it, we'll just choose another way and, and look for the safest street to, to cross the street. But there will always be a human behind the wheel. It's like driving a Tesla, right? You have, you have your hands on the wheel independently, that is autonomous, but whenever it needs intervention, there will be someone there watching.
All right, I'll ask before President Sandy does, but can these drive school buses for the school district by any chance?
Very soon.
All right, well, when you get there, let us know. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions?